Call the Board of Education, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Meredith Cole, here. Brian Hamm, here. Dan Holloway, here. John Kern, here. Bree Schweitzer, here. Susan Mormon, here. Darlene Bailey, here. We have four. Do you want to adopt them in the agenda?
Move that the agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Next, we have recognitions. Dr. Gustafson.
Oh, did I miss that? No. My apologies, Dr. Gustafson. Please sit down. I will confess that I'm a Mac user and it's the opposite way to look at the agenda. So I need to... We have the tax rate hearing. And the tax rate hearing is designed to provide an opportunity for public comment on the district's proposed tax levies for the upcoming year. So Dr. Miller will give us a brief overview.
Thank you. Yes, annually, we're supposed to set our tax rate. And because we are a charter county, we need to set that rate before October 1st. So 2022 is a non-reassessment year, but even though it's a non-reassessment year, we've seen some growth. So when you look at assessed valuation, which is how we determine our tax rate, it's broken out into two separate categories: real estate and personal property. We saw a growth of $10,261,411 in real estate. We've seen a growth of $21,260,529 for personal property. So that growth is approximately 20%, 25%, and that was experienced statewide. So just understand that that's happening. But the overall growth in assessed valuation is $31,529,940. When we actually translate that down to the tax rate, there's only going to be a one-cent increase between last year's tax rate and this year's tax rate. So the overall operating or general fund will be set at $3.5976. And the debt service fund is at $1.19200 for the overall tax rate at $4.7878. So that's tax rate information.
Any questions from board members? Any questions from the public? Okay, I believe we have a recommendation.
Move to set the tax levy for operations at $3.5976 and debt service at $1.19200 for a total levy of $4.7878.
Second.
Roll call, please. Meredith Cole, yes. Brian Hamm, yes. Dan Holloway, yes. John Kern, yes. Bree Schweitzer, yes. Susan Mormon, yes. Darlene Bailey, yes. Public comment? We do not have any public comment this evening?
No.
Now we'll have recognitions. Dr. Gustafson, make it up twice.
That's good. So very proud to be here tonight to honor some students who have been chosen for the National Merit Scholarship Program. High school juniors entered the 2023 National Merit Scholarship Program, took a 2021 PSAT test that was offered in the fall on KHS. There are two levels of initial recognition, which came out this month, just last week. There are committed students and national merit semifinalists. There's less than 50,000 US students that are honored as committed or semifinalists. And there are just a little more than 16,000 students in the United States who actually are semifinalists. Since 1992, KHS has had 47 students recognized as committed or higher. So I am very pleased to honor Anna Jensen and Tanner Mayfield as our 48th and 49th students recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Okay, now Anna received the committed designation and has unfortunately finished in the scholarship process, but it's still a very great honor. Tanner is a national semifinalist. To become a finalist, he and Sandy and Shaw will have to write a detailed scholarship application. Semifinalists will be notified in February if they have reached the finalist stage where they have a chance of more than 7,250 scholarships worth nearly $28 million. So it's a pretty special honor. This year's juniors have an opportunity to take the PSAT on October 12th, so we have hopefully some more to come back next year. This is pretty awesome, 48 and 49 right here since 1992.
Dr. Gustafson.
Take the picture and then my parents can get yours, all right? Excellent. One more.
Next on the agenda, we have something new, School Spotlight. Dr. Miller's going to talk about that.
Sure. This month, we decided to start something new and add to our monthly board meetings to invite each school to come in once a month and share something exciting that's happening in their school. Dr. Gustafson's wanting to speak to us about exciting things happening at Carney High School, just so we can cheer the enthusiasm that the kids are cheering.
So I took first because I think every other school has had my own. What do you do in here? When I have, at the high school, we have a broadcasting department led by Dante. Come up here, Dante. This is Dante Distefano. He is our senior. He is involved in two different broadcasts, one broadcasting and one publications class. He does fantastic work. He gets leaned on by a whole lot of folks, including me, in this situation because if I'm going to make, if we're going to make the high school showcase what's going on there right now, there's not a better person to tell the story than Dante. So Dante, why don't you kind of tell a little bit of what you do in high school and what you do at BBN?
So our program, we call it KHS TV, which is we go through all of our news. So like in time, we do this every day. So every day, third hour, fourth hour, we get all the clubs or you can report information out to the students. And our fourth hour class, which I'm involved in, is our sports. You know, they cover all anything that's happened in the fall or the weekend. And then, so we also have another program. It's called BBN. So if you guys don't go to the Friday night football games, you can watch, you can listen to me and some of my other peers I work with on ESPN3 or our YouTube channel, The Love Broadcasting Network. We stream all football, basketball games, all on there. And we have like companies that come in called LT and Global. They're based out of Liberty, but they're also a kind of Google-like chain. But they come in, they're kind of like our sponsor. So they supply us with equipment, cameras, monitors, stuff like that. And it just, it makes everything just run a lot. So this year, and you know Karen Johnson, I can call her Karen now because she put my picture. She left last year, but she was my broadcasting teacher since I was in eighth grade. I've been doing this from eighth grade to now. Well, she decided she left going into my senior year, so we get a new teacher in this room. And she's been doing a great job, and she doesn't have any technical problems. So she's learning as I'm learning as well. And that kind of falls back on me to where I'm having an entire class pointed towards me. So every day, I come to class because this room, she's over at Junior High, so she's always late to class. And it's not her fault, obviously, she's got a lot of technical problems over there. But you know, I start class, I finish class, I let everyone know as soon as they walk in the door, "All right, guys, sit down. This week, we got BBN on Friday. All right, make sure we get our packages done." And then pretty much anything that happens in class, it runs through me.
Hey, this is Dante's board right here. Go ahead, Dante.
As the new year has started off here at Carney High, there's been a different attitude and more of a positive vibe through the hallways and classrooms. Students and teachers are really feeling the buzz around the school.
What I enjoy most would be my students. That's why I came into teaching, is I really enjoy interacting with the kids. I've got a great group this year. They're fun, they're ready to learn, just a really good group of kids.
My favorite thing that I have been enjoying the most about this year is I feel like we, the students are really coming off of, the students, teachers, I feel like the community, everyone's really coming off of those COVID years, right? So every, you're starting to really feel everyone get back into the groove, really start to kind of get out of their COVID shells a little bit, I feel like. So I feel like that has been kind of exciting, just seeing everyone kind of get back a little bit to normalcy, I guess.
I think just the excitement around the school. I think everyone coming in this year, like you weren't having to deal with COVID or wearing a mask or anything like that, and just kind of had a different feel to the start of this year and just a different kind of excitement to start the school year this year.
So this year, what I've really enjoyed the most is just how the building itself feels like it's come together, meaning that we've had an assembly already, we've got more planned, homecoming's coming up, all the teachers are doing things before games. So I feel like it's just been a good year where everyone has started to kind of be more family-oriented as a building.
This year, I would say the games. I think the football games are really fun, and I feel like a lot of people from this school come and enjoy them and participate.
Ever since the 2020 COVID-19 pandemic, things just have not set right here at Carney High. Some new changes and some may call it a fresh start.
I think the biggest change between last year and this year would be that we've been consistent this year. Last year, we were still dealing with some of the COVID protocols, having to do contact tracing, and still a little bit of social distancing. And this year, it seems to be we've gotten back to normal. And I think everybody has enjoyed that change.
I mean, one of the biggest things, you get to see everybody's face, which is, I mean, that's, you get to build relationships a little bit better that way, I think. And again, just the different buzz in the air. I know football's having some success, and that carries over not only to the school and the hallways, just to the whole community in general.
Some policies have changed. You know, students haven't really been crazy about the policy changes, but I think they're starting to get used to it. And I think, like in my class, one of those is like, you know, we're really cracking down on the cell phones, right? But I think for me, it's been a great opportunity to really build relationships and get to talk to students more. You know, they're not as looking down on their phones as much, which I think they see as well, like we just have a lot of personal conversations in that downtime instead of, you know, having their heads in their phones. I think it's awesome.
It seems like this group of sophomores have come in and they're real positive, and the group of seniors have been excellent leading them. And just the teachers and all the support staff have just been excited to be here.
Something that has improved from last year to this year is I think there's been a lot more posters about respect and the respect campaign, and I've noticed that a lot more this year.
So I think the most, the biggest improvement is just how students have come in ready to learn. Everybody sees the importance of that after the last couple of years of being hybrid, not in school at all, all of those things. And just putting that together this year, just the feel of we're kind of all in it and we're going to make it work type of feeling.
The culture of the building in general, the whole culture, the environment, just student spirits in general, I think, I've seen that within student council as well, just the participation and the amount of kids that show up or the amount of kids that are reaching out to be extra involved. So I think we're starting to see a little bit of a change in that as well. I think it's exciting.
We have 15 new teachers here as well, I think, staff, which, I mean, we've hired some good quality new teachers, and everyone was kind of just excited to come in and start the school year. And that translates to students. When teachers are excited, students are excited. Athletics are doing pretty well. And again, that just creates this environment that's very positive in the hallways.
I think there has been a different feel. I think kids are excited to be at school this year. I think teachers are excited to be here. I know administration, we're really excited to be here and just moving forward and making things work in the environment that we have.
I think the thing that could affect the environment in a positive way in the building is the school spirit. I think even within my student council members, you know, I tell them, "You're the leaders of the school. You guys are the people who set the tone." So starting to, one of our biggest goals is upping the school spirit. So I think trying to get that stuff out there, you know, get some posters in the hallway, get excited, participate in those types of things, I think that's going to be the biggest effect, for sure.
I think something that's been affecting the environment is definitely teachers' attitudes. Teachers are excited, it really affects the environment.
This year, we've, in the school itself, we're working on putting up some positive motivational sayings around the school. We've had some murals painted on the walls, I think, that have kind of changed how the school feels. We've had a big bulldog painted in one section down by the library. And so I think just the feel of the building is a little bit different with some updating with painting and stuff like that's really helped just kind of make things feel more normal.
I think the community could have an effect on the environment because all the people from the community showing up to games and showing support is a really big positive way to just bring the community together. And I think everyone has a big part in the school environment and spirit.
I think, yes, I think the community has definitely plays a part in how the school feels. We have a large part of our community that really, the school, that supports the school and provides the school with resources, with guest speakers, with information. That has really been helpful and affects how the school is portrayed in media, in the kids' lives that attend here. And the people in the community feel good about what our schools are doing.
No, I don't think. I've had a great three weeks. The students are excited. It's been a positive experience so far and looking forward to continuing the rest of the school year.
Carney High School's a great place to be. I'm glad to be here.
As the rest of the year continues, there is more positivity and fun to come here in Carney, Missouri. For KHS TV, I'm Dante Distefano, signing off.
Any questions for Dante on what he does or what he goes through? What are you going to do when your graduating party, right? What are you going to do next?
So kind of my plan, kind of my plan after high school is I'm thinking about going to college. But with the field I'm going into, there's a lot of other options. So the company, I've been kind of working on the side with LT and Global. I mean, I've already made some good money off of them. We're in some, like, I know, a few weeks, when I said a few months ago, I worked SIU volleyball game, you know. I know last year I did an ANAI basketball tournament down at the convention center. I mean, it's, right now, I could either go to college, but that's kind of like what I want to do or college is the work I always had.
So you've got options, is there? So the broadcasting piece has been great for you as far as?
Absolutely. Yeah, I'd be like, I gotta say, my freshman year, I was like super into basketball, and I guess I decided to take a break from that, and I just kind of found something that I already love, so.
But did I need to go to college to be in broadcasting?
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's good to hear that you're making money from somewhere, because I'm sure we didn't pay you for that.
So Dante, you lead the way at the high school, but obviously, we're to see more of these spotlights coming in the future. You think you'll be able to help out some of those younger kids out there, younger people maybe leading this up with other schools?
Absolutely, so absolutely. Kind of my goal this year, since, you know, we do have a new teacher, is a lot of it falls on me in this, but I don't take it as a negative. We did lose Johnson last year, but now it's my turn to take this program, make it how I want it to be, how I want it to look in the future. So that's kind of, that's kind of my goal for this year. We have a really good group of kids coming in. And I can say, last Friday night, in this Excel shirt, those, the people behind the scenes, you know, the people you don't hear, you don't hear my voice, those guys in the back, you know, they're, as soon as they got on those machines, you know, got a replay machine, example, where she, 10 minutes in the game, she was, "I don't know what I'm doing." But as soon as, you know, she just let them go, let them figure it out, by the end of the night, she was having replays left and right like it was nothing. So that's, that made me feel great because I know this group and the group that's going to follow is going to continue in my footsteps and really take pride in what we can do.
So Dante's toughest class, the second hour, which is office practice. So he came up to me a couple weeks ago, he's like, "Hey, Gus, can I go to Junior High and help out over there?" So if he goes over to Junior High right now and helps out, the creators kind of show him in the way, show him how to do it.
Excellent.
Have you thought about being a teacher?
No. It's half missed here.
Several of us at the football game the other night did have the opportunity to come and see the work that some of y'all are doing relating to that particular game. We were up in the press box, then came over to the classroom, so it was great to see.
We were there when you had to fill right after the half, and they didn't give you a commercial break? And they just gave a button and said, "Fill." That's it.
Most of the time, we have commercials, but since it's the start of the year, we're still getting like product to come in, I'll probably end up using that for commercial coming. So yeah, that's not most of the time how it is. It's kind of raw scrambling right now. We make it work.
It was, they were all calm back there, I will just tell you. So I mean, he taught them well.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you.
Those of you, yeah, I was going to say, those of you here for recognitions, please feel free to go whenever you like. Next, we have the consent agenda.
Move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Any questions about any items on the consent agenda? None? All in favor? Item D, ratification of agreements, contracts. Number one, ratification, ratification.
No consent.
I'm sorry. Why am I, I'm really struggling with this. It's jumping. There we go. Okay, sorry. Frank, I don't want this computer next time. Compliment on that. Financials?
The financials presented include the August information. The fund balance report is showing that we're still at the budgeted amount of 21% in the operating fund. This month is the first month we actually have all the salaries run, so it'll be a really big review of budget. Hopefully, we'll have a budget update soon.
Any questions for Ginger? Construction update?
We need to go over there before we stand here.
Just as long as we can hear you.
So this is Megan Masterson. She is project manager for Live Bar Carney Projects from DLR Group, and she is going to present the construction update today.
So the district office is coming along very well. Very pleased. Went over there earlier today. Next week, they're going to be installing the boardroom desk, installing carpet, everything. It's just really coming together nicely. Mid-October is the date we're looking at for construction to be done and furniture to move in. Elementary school, new elementary school is very exciting. We've been having a lot of meetings with staff development, school engineers, the city to get a lot of the site items kind of laid out. We've been continuing to develop the plans of the building. We've been meeting with a lot of the staff. We actually had a meeting with them earlier today. And then the exterior of the building, we're continuing to develop. We were actually sent drawings to New Perk Novak for them to price so we can get a better machine of where we are, look at the budget, and if any materiality needs to change. Any questions?
The design of the new elementary, are we keeping it consistent with the Carney theme as far as how with the renovation of the high school, kind of how the face of that looks? Are we trying to stay with that?
So we, there we are. Currently, metal panel is incorporated into that. Whether or not we'll be able to keep that, it's a budgeting item, but we are trying to stay within that same theme. So they'll read across.
And when are we doing it? When are we going to name it? Are we going to send out a survey or are we going to do something fun with that?
We'll probably have to have some technical maybe committee or something a little bit later than the end.
Yeah, it's exciting.
It is. So then our next deliverable is wrapping up design development, which will be November 1st. We'll have that package ready by December.
And the new district office is October, so does that mean this is our last meeting in here?
We have one more meeting in here, correct? And then November will be our first meeting in the new office?
That's correct. Everything goes as planned.
Thank you. Return to Learn Plan?
Before you just, it's the updated Return to Learn Plan. We are required to continue to submit this every six... to submit this every six months. We have this as an item of information because we've taken this to different stakeholder groups. Our district leadership team has reviewed this. Our Bulldog Fest team has reviewed this. And it's really for you to just review at this point. There is a pivot or a pretty significant shift in that one of the things that we're trying to do is moving from pandemic mindset to endemic mindset. Where really, you know, if you're positive with COVID, that you should be reaching out to your physician and working with your physician on that return plan. So happy to, Ray and I are happy to answer any questions.
Questions on that. Program review, grant-funded programs.
Do you guys want me to stand up or what?
Just so you can hear.
What'd you say?
Just so we can hear.
Okay. So this is the review for everything that went on through the Clay County Children's Fund last year. So these were the partners that we worked with. Some of these were new partners to us. A couple of these we are no longer working with. We have pulled in more outside private providers. We were not able to get the support we needed through Tri-County and Synergy. They were our main suppliers of therapists, but they just weren't able to provide enough therapists for us. So we have partnered with Carney Counseling as well as New Strong KC, and they've given us great support. So this is kind of, and I will tell you this, I had to present to the Clay County Children's Fund Board today. So this was an overview that I gave them. You guys already know this information. But at a glance, this is the makeup of our students. Of course, 93% white. We don't have a whole lot of diversity in Carney, as you know. Panorama Survey is something, Panorama is paid for through Clay County Children's Fund, and that's one of the ways that we identify students that might need support. The survey questions cover school climate, sense of belonging, teacher-student relationship, social awareness, emotional regulation, positive feelings, challenging feelings, and supportive relationships. So this is kind of just an overview of some of our takeaways from the Panorama Survey. District-wide, so third grade through 12th grade, that is, the students are taking the survey. Kindergarten through second grade, it is teacher perception. But our third grade through 12th grade, so in those categories, students identify whether they have strengths in those categories or they don't have strengths. So overall, third grade through 12th grade, 72% of our kids do report as being on track, having those strengths in their social-emotional awareness. Our lowest, our free and reduced lunch kiddos, they are lower. They're 64% on track. And if you drop down to the bottom, our students that are on IEPs are 57%. I mean, those kiddos are just dealing with different stresses than other kids are dealing with. For whatever reason, third grade was our lowest grade level score with only 63%. You know, we looked, it's like those were kids were first graders when they missed the end of their school year. Don't know if that has something to do with it, but it was our, the lowest grade overall. And then we did look at the diversity issue. Kids who identified as multiracial were 67%. Students who identified as black are 57%, and our white students were 74%.
Oh, the Panorama, can I ask, how many, do we have all students take it, or is there opt-outs or?
There is an opt-out.
So how, what percentage of our kids are?
Over 90% of the kids take it. You know, kids are absent. We try to get those made up. It doesn't always happen. The Children's Fund also does support our DEI work. That is our work with POAC, the People of All Color 60. They also support the Respect Campaign. They have funded that for us. So part of the work with the DEI Task Forces last year, they, we did create our mission, vision, and values. So this is, this is our mission statement. And again, our work with Jamie Grayson through POAC. He does the anti-bullying and leadership sessions with our kids. Actually met with Jamie today with Dr. Gubson, Mr. Woods, and Mr. Hoffman to set up our new sessions for this next year, getting those dates set and our kids going on that. And then the Respect Campaign. I was happy to hear the young lady in the video refer to, you know, the Respect Campaign. We would really like to get this spread throughout the community, get this out there as much as we can. We, last year, we introduced it. This year, we really would like to do more work with it. So a couple of the things we've done, we are having, it's just an awful lot to throw the Respect Campaign back on the principles. They've got so much to do already. So the thought was if we could get two representatives from each of the buildings to work on initiatives for their buildings, and then they would also participate with the DEI Task Force, and hopefully they could plan district-wide initiatives, you know, with the theme of respect. If our kids can just learn that, the basic premise of respecting everybody. You don't have to agree. You don't, you know, you don't have to hang out with somebody. You don't have to agree with their lifestyle. But being respectful, that's, that's what we would like from all of our kids. Services that were provided through Clay County Children's Fund, these are the different types of services provided. Our behavior intervention is done through Dr. Ricky Moran. She's been a great asset to the district. She works with our highest behavior needs. The behavior classrooms, both the one at Carney Middle School and Carney Elementary, she works with those classrooms and with those teachers. She, we referred 20 students to her last year. She served all 20. We felt like maybe everything wasn't done with as much fidelity as we needed because there just wasn't enough of her. So she has added to her staff this year. Again, this is totally funded through the Children's Fund. But what she is doing now, she's going in, she is creating the behavior plans, telling them, you know, what should the student be doing? What are the expectations for the teacher, administrators, for the parents? And then she will have the person that works with her, making sure people are following the plan with fidelity. Our expressive therapy, we had art therapy this last year, as well as art journaling. These have been incredibly popular group therapy sessions for our kids. Kids want to go back. They want to sign back up. And it just gives them a place of comfort in dealing with the anxiety that they're dealing with. They're dealing with the depression that they're dealing with. But these have been very popular. Kaylee Waxman, who is our art therapist, we had her just one day a week last year. And she is giving us two days a week this year. So we'll be able to expand on that. And then the art journaling is new. That's part of what New Strong KC brought into the district, which also was very popular. We were never, we used to have a music therapist through Tri-County, lost that music therapist, and have never been able to replace that person. They are hard to find. We have a new contract with Preferred Family Health as well. They did work, through the second semester, worked with our alternative program, Carney Academy. They're going to expand that and have groups at Carney Academy, as well as the high school and the junior high, which we know is much needed. So this last year, we had 118 students, new referrals for individual therapy. We did have 20 decline for whatever reason. Maybe parents found other resources. You know, they declined for a variety of reasons. 72 of the new referrals did receive therapy. 41 students were discharged, but some of those would have been students that were continuing treatment from the year before. So I, those numbers, they don't quite jive, but it's because you've got to carry over so many kids. And, you know, we ended the year last year with a large waitlist, so pulling those kids in as well. These were the different group therapy sessions that we had in the different buildings. And then our signs of suicide program, just kids that took the initial survey. Out of all the kids that took the initial survey, 187 kids did receive a secondary screen. And that was either through our outside providers that came in and helped us with that day, or our own counselors, or our social workers. And out of those 187, 17 of those students were referred for additional support. These are the different professional development sessions that either counselors, social workers, teachers, or the different people within the district participated in this. Again, all of these funded through the Children's Fund. And then just the biggest barrier we had, we did in the year this last year with quite a list, a waitlist. With the expansion by Carney Counseling Group, they added three additional providers that do individual therapy as well as group therapy. And New Strong KC, they also added two additional providers. And both of them said that they're willing to do additional family support because we know so many, we can help the kids at school, but so many of the issues are coming from home. So they're also willing to help families. We are already have 85 kids that are right now receiving services this year. And in the past, it's taken us a little while to get going with this. But we have 85. Megan Masters, who is our lead social worker, she is waiting to place two more kids. Just kind of letting some of these new providers get their wheels under them. Just two kids left, and then we are, we have zero waitlist. Again, art therapy is expanding to two days a week. They're expanding our substance abuse sessions, and the behavior intervention is expanding. So we feel like we've, by going to outside providers, we're really able to take care of a lot of the issues that we had. Because the biggest problem we had is we didn't have enough providers. And just an impact story, we, we had a kiddo who, she was a freshman, and, you know, she kind of said that she had dealt with anxiety and depression. She's always had that, runs in her family. She said she hadn't experienced any traumatic events or anything, but this is, this is just part of it. And her mom signed her up for art therapy, and just what an impact this has made for her and has really helped her work through this. So in 2021, we had 275 students who received either small group or individual services somehow. And in 2122, through, through groups and resilience and individual, we impacted 569 students. Any questions?
So get your crystal ball out for me, Jennifer. Do you see, the last two years, obviously difficult two years. And so obviously, you're seeing some of the services go because kids didn't have the normalcy of school every day. Whatever, we can leave that part out. But the, the main focus is, is that they're going to need more support in the short term. Do we think in the long term that this will, you know, will hit a peak, but then we'll start settling back, you know?
I, I do think we will. I mean, I, I think we have a lot of kids that are really struggling right now. I just, you know, everybody has said it. We feel like this year feels so much more normal. And I'm hoping these kids are feeling that.
Well, that video that he showed us was, everyone was talking. I should have wrote down every time the word "normal" came out.
Right.
And how excited they were to see faces.
Yes.
And so obviously, but my concern is, is that, I mean, as this thing grow, as, as we continue to impact students, you know, to give them the services, I mean, obviously we should see a peak. And we should see a gradual, you know, needing a blast of less over time.
Yeah. I do, I think it's going to be years.
Okay.
But I.
That's why the crystal ball, that's kind of.
Can I add something? I also think there's a reduction of stigma in seeking assistance, right?
Right.
I think that that's also a good, positive thing.
Right.
Where kids are asking earlier for more intervention and support.
Okay.
And we even heard that, you know, back whenever we did the Spirit deal, the, the kids identified that what they wanted was more support in the area of social-emotional. And those kids said it. They said the stigma is with the adults. It's not with the kids. And I think since we have a lot of kids that are receiving services, I think kids, I, I hope they are going home and saying, you know what, it's, it's okay if I need help. It's okay if I need to talk to somebody. And maybe they are having an impact on.
Having, for me, having some kids that are older and then ones at high school now, I think kids are more supportive of each other in a way I hadn't seen before with my older kids, too. I think they react to each other a lot differently than.
Jennifer Rice had one question, and maybe I should notice, but do any of these programs period of the summer?
We do have providers that, they send something. A lot of families feel like they're going to be okay in the summer for whatever reason. But we do set things up in the summer. We have several providers that do still see kids. We have our Caregivers Corner on the website, that if somebody needs to reach out for help, it tells them where to go to to get help. There, there are always people available to them if they, if they need that support in the summer.
I know it sounds strange, but from our behavioral health side, and of course, I know some of those therapists up there personally, and doctors. But one of our biggest givebacks, as we talked about moving out of masks, was a lot of our behavioral health are saying, we're able to see some of those non-verbal expressions, some people's reactions right off the key. And that's what the government, so we're able to inquire, even at a teacher level and stuff like that. Hey, John, you okay? You know, because just initial reaction and kind of get that feedback. And so I think we're more inquisitive and try to be more in tune to other people's reactions, feelings, all those things that we didn't normally see when everybody was covered up. I know it sounds strange. It's covered every day for at least 10 hours. But, yeah, but it's just, I think it's a huge thing.
Thank you very much. Okay. Now we're to action items. Ratification of the purchase from Scott Rice.
Move to ratify the over $50,000 purchase for Scott Rice as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Ratification of master service agreement and scope of work with Getting Smart.
Move to ratify the master service agreement and scope of work from Getting Smart for Carney. Move to ratify the master service agreement and scope of work from Getting Smart for Portrait of a Graduate as presented.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Personnel. Approval of full-time substitute positions?
I'm sure you've all-
We need to make the motion first.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Go ahead.
You get all excited.
You didn't want to stand up.
Move to approve hiring six permanent building substitutes as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Now you can go.
Okay, all right. Before use a proposal for the six building substitutes, I'm sure you've all heard that we're having trouble filling some teacher vacancies. We've had, I think, two hundred and seventy subs requested. And right now, we're about seventy-seven percent fill rate in the district with Kelly Services. Now, that's a little misleading in that eighty-eight percent of, or there's an eighty-eight percent fill rate for teachers. So a lot of that is paraprofessionals, we're not able to find paraprofessionals. But when we don't have a teacher, or a teacher vacancy is not covered by a substitute, we have classes doubling up, we have teachers taking their planned periods and covering for other teachers. And frankly, we're probably, we're not meeting the needs of our students in probably two classes, let alone one, right? So I met with a group of teachers, building secretaries, central office staff. We've talked about the building subs, I presented that in the weekly update that we're entertaining that. The idea behind the building sub is there's a permanent sub in the building every single day. Now, we're only doing six right now. I fully expect if this is successful, we would maybe come back in October and ask for a seventh. The reason we went for the sixth is I want to make sure that they're busy. I know in all three of our secondary buildings, we would have, we would have a use for that sub every single day. So out of those two hundred and seventy-some odd vacancies, fifty-four percent of those are coming between the hours of four o'clock in the morning, eight o'clock in the morning, the day of the absence. And those are the ones that we're not filling. The further back you go, so up to five, like the ones that are five days in advance, that's a hundred percent fill rate. And it's five percent short of that every day. It grows five percent every day you can go past that. Even two days ahead of time, it's still in the upper eighties, the fill rate. So it's the ones that are the morning of that we're having trouble. So if your building sub is there, you have a morning of, you can't get a Kelly sub to fill that vacancy, your building sub's there. They can fill for Paris, they can fill lunch aches, they can do recess duty, they can do classroom. If they're needed in another building, we can shift them to another building. The whole idea is we want to stay in that building. The advantage there would be that they have relationship with the kids, they have relationship with the staff, they know the routines, they're a, they're a member of the staff. Now, they are, it is a little bit more expensive for the district. The daily rate is actually cheaper than what we would go through Kelly. We're like a hundred and fifty-five with the upcharge for a sub on a daily with Kelly Services. But when you throw in benefits and retirement in there, it ends up being a more, a little bit more expensive venture. But I really do feel like, I think that this is going to be a, a good, a good change for us. And as long as we can get some quality people in those positions, I really feel like it's going to take some stress off our teachers.
Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Approval of part-time counselor position?
We have to approve an additional part-time counselor at LENS as presented.
Second.
Am I on again?
You're on again.
Okay, same thing, meeting the needs of students. Right now, we're splitting a counselor between LENS and Southview. The students, the level, the amount of students is a pretty high number, but we're also between two buildings. We're not meeting the social emotional needs of the students and counseling needs of our students. So the proposal is to hire a half-time counselor for LENS, a five-fifty. Hopefully, we can get a retired counselor up there that wants to, wants to come in and work with our students. I, I think we already have some interest, if I'm not mistaken. But that would be paid out of S R three funds, federal stimulus money for the next two years. And then when, hopefully, when we open up elementary number five, we would hire a full-time counselor at that point. So we would not need the five-fifty anymore.
How many students are in LENS? Just Rock, I don't need.
I don't know that for sure. It's a hundred and-
Hundred and what?
Hundred and forty.
Any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? Item D is approval of resolution for success-ready schools.
Approval of S L P.
Move to approve compensation of twenty-eight dollars per hour for the S L P supervision of the S L P As as presented.
Second.
Hey, 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 slow down.
That's my thought, I'm done.
Thank you, John. Speech-language pathologists, we were not able to fill some of our vacancies of speech-language pathologists with S L Ps. So we hired some speech-language pathologist assistants, slippers. So they actually require supervision, they certify S L P. And so there's some extra hours that those S L Ps will be spending doing some evaluations and assessments, which will cause them to have some, an extra workload. They've asked for a stipend, I want to look at it and see how much actually that's going to be. The twenty-eight dollars an hour is what we pay all of our teachers for extra work. So I just recommend that we will keep track of the hours, we'll pay them a twenty-dollar, twenty-eight dollars an hour, look at the actual workload, what it, the amount of hours that they put in for this year. And then we can maybe come back in the spring and look at maybe a possible stipend.
I do have a question on this, so everything that we typically do has a schedule. And so since this is additional work, it doesn't need a schedule, do you understand that right?
So when you say scheduled-
Yeah, so like every, every position, every job, you know, all the S L Ps have a schedule for, for pay, right? And if they do extra duty, they're, you know, we have a column for that.
Yeah, this would be, this would be added to that extra pay schedule, it'd be a, it'd be a S L P supervision.
So it's something that when we add a twenty dollars now, but we also need to make sure that we have that in schedule.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Do you have any estimate right now as to how much time if you did one of these?
I do not, I don't think it's going to be more than twenty hours a year, I really don't.
Oh.
Will we leave that position open going forward still? So if the interest comes in in November or December, that it's still an option or no?
The position of-
For the, for an S L P?
Yeah, our hope is that we would, we would, we would be able to get an S L P. We actually still have one vacancy there, we're covering right now.
Right, so we're leaving that position open going forward to the-
Yes.
Okay, correct.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Approval of resolution for success-ready schools.
Move to approve the resolution on membership and success-ready students network as presented.
Second.
Back-to-school season is undoubtedly very stressful and overwhelming.
There's your little skip ads right up there. Didn't last long. We're just going to give you a brief overview of this.
Board meeting. We begin with a look at what's known as competency-based education. The idea that students should advance in their education based on their mastery of skills and expectations, not based on seat time. A new statewide group called the Success Ready Students Work Group is studying the issue here in Missouri. That group is made up of educators, school board members, administrators, parents, and other stakeholders. One of the facilitators of the group is Dr. Pam Hedgepath. And she tells us competency-based learning meets the individual needs of students.
So competency-based learning is really centered on student learning. And it is an ongoing process of having really clear learning targets. And then students and teachers and parents using assessment tools to really identify where the student learning is. And then where student learning is, then designing instructional practices that really meet the individual needs of students. It's highly motivating for students. It keeps parents and teachers and students very informed on where the current learning level is so that the learning can be scaffold and supported to really meet the individual needs of students.
Another facilitator for the project is Dr. Mike Fulton. He tells us the goal of the group is to develop a framework for the use of competency-based learning in Missouri.
As part of that framework, redesign the current state assessment system, including the MAP test, to better support students, educators, and informed parents on where their child is on their learning continuum and support them in their growth toward being college, career, and workplace-ready. We also are going to have a component of this work that will speak to the need for flexibility by school districts who want to innovate in this space of competency-based learning and assessment.
The Success Ready Students Work Group will be holding a series of meetings during the coming weeks with the goal of having a framework developed by early May. We will be keeping you informed about this group's progress.
So really, this is the direction a lot of school districts are wanting to head. They had three different levels of participation, but honestly, because of our work in real-world learning, work that the elementaries doing on proficiency skills, our project-based learning, Portrait of a Graduate, because of a lot of the things we already have in place, we are ready for being at that, that top level. We weren't real sure, and actually, they, they came to us because they want us to be a part of this. There's not a lot of schools our size that are involved in this, it's mostly bigger schools. And we felt that was important for us to have a seat at the table when they're talking about changing the state assessment and, and building this framework.
Well, in real-world learning, we've been the leader, you know, in the middle, really pushed that envelope of getting kids ready for any career path that they, they feel is right for them. So that doesn't surprise me.
Statewide, this system is on its own team. It's exciting because I think that, that has the potential to be the most influential on assessment and instruction that we've seen coming out of S A and Long Island.
And focus on the kids.
We're approving a resolution. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Approval of agreement with LT and Global Communications.
Move to approve the agreement of service with LT and Global Communications as presented.
Second.
We're happy to answer any questions you have, Dave, if you have any specific questions.
It's not necessarily a question, it's more of a, I know we're working with Niles Media and they do a lot for us, but we're having a, a radio station in town that's growing and doing more work in Carney and there in Carney. And if we, if we approve this, we're locked into them and, and we can't necessarily, at the end of the school year, reassess to see if a local business would have the opportunity to do the work as well.
Well, there's a termination agreement.
There's an "L."
There is an "L," okay. So I just want to make sure that, I just don't want us to pigeonhole ourselves when we can support local, if, if they have the capabilities.
Would it be helpful to hear from Dave about all the different things that Niles does for us? Because I think that's part of it, understanding really what they do.
Sure.
Do you want to speak to that?
Sure.
You have to be up.
Okay. Now, Niles Bean has started back in two thousand and nineteen. And Dante, you got to see the game day experience, you got to see a little piece of that. They also offer academic support during your fourth hour. Lee Hughes comes in, he works with those students. That bridges the gap between the business sponsors and those. So we have, right now, we have around thirty-eight, thirty-six business sponsors. It went up from twenty-eight last year. We did see a dip in a little bit, obviously COVID had a little bit of an impact on that. But as far as that, he works with them in the morning, then in the afternoon, he comes in, he does the game day support. LT and Global comes in, does the technical support, you saw a little piece of that too. So it's several things together that's added. So it's, it's more of a partnership. Obviously, you know, if there's better options out there, we'll look at it, but I think we'll look at what you tell them.
And I think right now, just because I know Kelly Gentry and Dan Herman and them, they've worked with the radio station and stuff like that, but it's not exactly, right now, look at our local media station and stuff like, it's not exactly apples to apples, I mean, it's more of a broadcast, radio broadcast versus audio video.
And that's what I said, I don't know that they have all of the pieces of the puzzle, I just know I've heard they've had interest.
But yeah, I know, they, I've talked to me, yeah.
For example, like, the radio station would love to do audio, but that would take Dante's spot and the E S D and three broadcasts, which would compete with our students, so we could kindly, you know, stay up there.
But together as a compliment.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Dave? Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Approval of the advertising agreement with Canyon Orthodontics?
Move to approve advertising agreement with Canyon Orthodontics as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Approval of the advertising agreement with Kelly Wa?
Move to approve advertising agreement with Kelly Wa as presented.
I don't know about this one. Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Approval for Bill for Tim Cole contracting?
Second.
Nope.
Move to approve Bill for Tim Cole contracting as presented.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Stained?
I'm stained.
Stained.
You want to have stained? She asked if you want to have stained. Yes, I'm sorry. I know I have to, so.
All right. Or no comments?
Every September is childhood cancer awareness. A lot of people know that that's near, near, near my heart. I'm obviously wearing my pin, and I know we've had a lot of Carney Bulldogs in the past, not just mine. Past, but I just, you know, if you have had one, I'm thinking about you. And, and it's just, this was given, was it Barney? I can't remember who actually did the pins, but his wife had done them. And so I just, I fumble my words here, but it, it's a big month for me, it's a big month for my family.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that.
Yep.
The last couple of football games, Platte County and then Fort Worth State, I think it was, we got comments from the community and then as well as administrators for our Bulldog fans being respectful, our coaches and team. The emails were brought to us as boards and then as board members and then as well, just comments out in the, the community. So I want to tell the Bulldog family and the staff and everyone how proud and excited I am to be a Bulldog with this football team. The student section is fun and they are respectful, they're loud, which is super fun as well. So to the football team, everybody keep up the great work and the students as well, so.
We must be selling lots of concessions because all these little kids are everywhere with food. And I did overhear someone say last night that they thought that the fact that we have a concession stand and that we use real money, it does teach kids that they need to know what money does. Because I think someone dropped, some kid dropped a twenty-dollar bill and wanted, how much can you get that for? And they had a little counseling from the concession stand. I would just like to say that we had a busy month getting ready for the August meeting. And I know the staff has made some changes, Dr. Millerian made some changes in how we prepared and got agendas together, and I appreciate that. And you're learning how your team works and we, except for my scheduling, we don't do this agenda pretty well. But no, we, there've been a lot of things done behind the scenes with staff as you're getting things in order. And I think that we all appreciate that good work because there've been questions about communication between you and board members and the staff, and we really believe that we're in a great place with that. And so thank you for your work there and thanks to the, to the staff. Because we do have a lot of new people. And it's great to say that things are back to normal, but we really have a different normal because we have a lot of new folks. So thank you all for, for your work and thank you, board members. So thank you all for, for your work, and thank you board members for being attentive and asking good questions, because that's what we want, is we want to have a lot of transparency, a lot of good questions, so that we truly understand what we're, what we're trying to do and what we're here about. So thank you all for that. Anybody else? Important dates? Strategic Planning Committee will have its first meeting on October 3rd. October 7th is homecoming, half-day. October 11th will be our quarterly board working session. October 17th, Strategic Planning Committee number two. October 19th is our next board meeting, and October 21st is end of quarter and early out.
Action for concession to immediately proceed the regular meeting in October, including any record or vote to discuss items and issues allowable under section 610-021 of the Missouri sunshine law.
Go ahead.
Meredith Cole?
Yes.
Brian Hamm?
Yes.
Dan Holloway?
Yes.
John Kirk?
Yes.
Bruce White sir?
Yes.
Susan Mormon?